...creeks, municipal leaders, staff and expert consultants. The city came together to issue the Los Angeles River Revitalization Master Plan.
Today's master plan defines the vision, but more importantly, it starts creating an image of what could be.
The Los Angeles River Revitalization Master Plan really is the blueprint for the next 20 years, 30 years of where we're going to go in this river. And, you know, one of the great components was we listed over 400 projects.
And because the master plan is in place, money is flowing to some of those 400 projects that will begin the revitalization of the Los Angeles River.
The city family is working hard to bring resources to bring to life the master plan.
Led by our mayor, Antonio Villagosa, and Councilman Ed Reyes, the city has worked closely with legislators in DC, particularly Congresswoman Marjorie Taylor Greene and Senator Boxer.
Since the adoption of the master plan is that we've seen money come to projects here for the Los Angeles River.
Yes, dollars are flowing from Washington, from Sacramento, the county and the city governments, and much of it is thanks to the voters who passed several bond initiatives that fund LA River projects. And if you look around, you can already see that money being put to work. Consider the recently opened Rio de los Angeles State Park.
What I see is a paradise for a families in here. It was a dream and now it's a reality. It has the impression like you are far from Los Angeles. It's only right here. Behind this hill, you can see the buildings.
The Los Angeles River path has become so beautiful. When I first rode the river path, the river had some problems. I mean, it was really quite dirty and murky, but now it is really splendid.
And as the LA River revitalization has unfolded, the city commissioned artists to jumpstart the beautification of the LA River. From gilded gates inviting Angelenos to the LA River, to monumental murals colorfully adorning the LA River banks. But possibly the best news of all, life is coming back to the Los Angeles River.
You'll find herons, you'll find ducks, you'll find over 200 different species of wildlife actually in the riverway. So nature has a way of saying to us human beings that, look, we were here first and we're going to come back. And that's what they're doing and we're going to help it.
There's a huge population of carp, there's lots of catfish, tilapia, sunfish, all the bottom feeders, all the tough fish have returned to the LA River. This is a landmark monumental step.
And city planners are looking to take more monumental steps in the revitalization of the Los Angeles River over the coming years and decades. Consider this timeline.
By 2013, we'll have double the parks that we have along the river. We're going to have miles and miles more of bike paths by 2013 along the river.
Ideas to turn the Los Angeles River into a commuter express for bicyclists, or at the very least, kind of a premier recreational area for everyone in the neighborhood.
We're going to see the river that was neglected and out of bounds become really a park. It's going to have a lot more nature, a lot more habitat. I think you'll see people fishing, we'll see neighborhoods that lead into the river revitalized, more connections, more access points.
Okay, but what if come 2013, we get hungry or thirsty while we're recreating at this revitalized river?
By 2013, you're going to see the little cafes, you're going to see places to stop and have coffee.
We have developers along this side of the river who are looking at commercial frontage where you can actually sit at the edge of the property and enjoy the river while indulging in a beverage.
Okay, so what happens beyond 2013?
As you go 2013 to 2020 there, we're going to have some stretches where some concrete will be terraced back, where we'll actually be able to remove some of the concrete and continue to move towards that transformation of naturalizing as much as possible of the river.
We're going to actually try to figure out how we can lay out the river, slow it down using rubber dams, contain the waterways, create artificial water bodies and design it so maybe, just maybe, we can reintroduce the rainbow trout, steelhead trout.
When the steelhead trout run returns to the Los Angeles River, that's when our work will be done. This year, we got the first photographs of steelhead in Biona Creek. We think that that's the beginning to hear our welcome home.
All the while, the city will complement the returning natural beauty with some man-made beauty as well. Yes, these river banks have been calling out to our local artists who dream that a revitalized LA River will turn into an artistic oasis.
There are huge canvases, concrete canvases here that could be used for art. So I think the art really plays an opportunity to bring people back to the river.
You'll really know when you approach the Los Angeles River that the river is there. You'll see new art, artist renderings, you'll see new art pieces.
We want to start a discussion of where art should go. The type of art that will complement families, that will complement the sensitivities of kids.
And the river planners are not just focused on static or stationary art, they want the river to become a destination location for performance art as well.
How can we bring more performance-based works to the LA River again, to bring audiences and to bring community? Those types of initiatives are quite exciting and I think that Art Department, the Department of Cultural Affairs can do more to activate the river in that way.
We would use what's called aquatic furniture, architecture, that creates shapes where people can sit in them and you have like amphitheater-type surrounding.
And in addition to the aesthetic, environmental and recreational benefits of river revitalization, we can expect significant economic impacts as the river renaissance ramps up.
For me, this is going to be an opportunity to create jobs.
This Los Angeles River will trigger all the investors all over the world, not just Korea, for investors to want to invest their money into LA River project. We never had such a thing.
And then consider the 11 iconic bridges that traverse the Los Angeles River. Remember, the LA River and its bridges have been featured in such box office hits as Grease and Terminator 2. But fundamentally, these bridges remain vital in connecting people within the city. But most of them were constructed between 1910 and 1930 and have faced the torment of torrential rains and accompanying river flooding. So the LA River Master Plan provides a 21st century rehab to the bridges to bring them up to modern safety standards while still preserving their character.
The goal is to actually respect the original intent of the architects and engineers and to do any widening or work with some of the historic framework in mind.
And moving vehicle traffic more efficiently is but one of the goals of the LA River Bridge Rehabilitation Program.
I asked the Bureau of Engineering, Public Works, with planning to make sure we are drawing a nexus, a connection with the river, the surface of the streets and the roadways, emphasizing bikes, bike paths, non-auto-related uses.
Okay, but given that channelization created unintended consequences, are there two sides to the revitalization coin as well? Well, community leaders living around the river have supported revitalization.
To revitalize it and make it a local amenity for the local communities that live around it is great, and the master plan just lends itself for that. I mean, it provides a vision.
But with the river region going through a renaissance, the area will become more attractive.
Whenever an area has been restored where the natural resources have been improved, it has always brought with it improved property values.
And that eventuality can become the other side of the revitalization coin for river neighborhoods.
They're rebuilding the areas and therefore creating more opportunities for the people of higher income. Should, you know, be inclusive to all community, community members.
So to avoid this potential pitfall, Los Angeles will continue to seek community input, communities which the city does not intend to gentrify out of their neighborhoods.
Every neighborhood will have the opportunity to find itself. We are creating processes that's going to allow for input and this city and all the government structures have everything in its power to make sure that they're not displaced. We find that balance.
And speaking of potential pitfalls, all sides have always agreed that the channelization of the LA River did an outstanding job at taming this waterway.
But if we're really serious about getting concrete out, we've got to figure out other ways of dealing with that stormwater. When those big storms come, they're going to wash out the city again if we don't really plan for it.
Well, the city has developed a plan for it.
What we'll do is as it's raining, we'll direct some of the rainwater into these upstream storage areas. After the rain is done, we'll reduce the water slowly, thus reducing the amount of water that actually happens during the peak rain events.
The changes to the channel will be and have been actually scrutinized by the Corps of Engineers and the County of LA to make sure that no impacts to flooding would occur.
Okay, so I bet you're wondering, how much will the revitalization of the Los Angeles River cost?
When it's all said and done, after about an 18- to 20-year period, I would say it would be closer to like eight billion, nine billion.
Surely a boatload of money, but consider the predicted economic ramifications if the city invests in river revitalization projects.
The master plan looked at the economics of the recommendations and sure, to change the entire river as called for the master plan could take billions of dollars. But we also found that the return on the investment could result in billions of dollars of return.
And hey, this is Los Angeles. Maybe the river revitalization is just the nip-tuck that the city needs at the dawn of the 21st century.
Why not make the river come back to life? Why not make it the one element that gives this whole city a face?
The surgery is underway. A new and improved Los Angeles River for all Angelenos to enjoy is just around the bend. Stand by for the glorious results.
I'm Mark Wolf. This is Panorama City. You're watching LA City View 35, our city, our channel. Yeah!
Good morning. October 12th, 2012. It's John Ferraro Chambers here at City Council. I'd like to call on the President of City Council, Mr. Herb Wesson, for the first presentation. If I could have all your attention and staff, if you could call on the President. Please welcome Mr. Wesson and Animal Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Today is a great day. Filipino-American Heritage Month later today, we're going to talk about the LA River and there'll be some other great presentations, but I have a special presentation myself. I'm trying to find a home for Mikey. Come here, Mikey. Twice a month, we try to do, well, four times a month, we try to do pet adoptions. I specialize on dogs. Mr. Corretta specializes with cats. And so I'm looking for a home for Mikey. Mikey is a mixed terrier, about a year old, and I'm told that whenever he sees children, he just lights up. Mikey's been through a tragic situation. He has a tragic story. He was traveling with his family that loved him very, very much. There was an automobile accident, killed the entire family. The only person that survived... The only person that survived, the only animal, companion animal that survived was Mikey. So he was orphaned in a second. He's been in our shelter for two months because we had to get a release from the courts to make sure that there were no other family members that wanted to take Mikey and raise him. So it's our responsibility to find a home for Mikey. So I'm asking those that can hear my voice, those that can see me on Channel 35, those of you great people that are in our council chambers today, if you're looking for love from a companion animal, I think you'll get it from Mikey. And I can say to you, being a pet owner myself, that Mikey is looking for love too. So help him get through this trauma, become his new family, and raise him. Plus, he's just as cute as he can be. Look at him. He will not get much bigger than this, maybe a little fatter, not much taller. So we will be in the back. I'm going to ask you to stay for a little while, and hopefully we will find a home for you, young fella. Remember, when you adopt one of these dogs, you're just not getting a companion animal. You're saving their lives. So please, if you're interested, call 888-452-7381. Probably 80% of the dogs we get adopted are adopted right here at City Hall. So those of you that are in your offices, those of you that are in the building today, come on down, take a look at Mikey, and let's give him a family. Mr. President, members, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Let's give Animal Services a big hand and the special technician there.
Mr. Garcetti, Tommy.
Now I've got to recognize the great councilman of the 13th District. Please call to the podium, Mr. Eric Garcetti. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you. We are very excited to celebrate so much here today. And don't worry to all my Filipino friends, as I mentioned, my barong tagalog is on its way down. But before we do our Filipino-American History Month, I have a very special presentation to recognize the contribution and the work of the International Rett Syndrome Foundation. Today, we have with us Sheri, Trey, and Lauren Brady, Sharon and Ariana Greenblatt and Sylvia, Emmanuel, Bertie, and Olivia Baker. And there's a lot of enthusiasm behind me, a lot of enthusiasm here. I especially want to thank Sylvia Baker, who has put in tremendous hard work putting this presentation together and inviting this amazing group of individuals, of Angelenos here today. For those who may not know, Rett syndrome is a disorder of the nervous system that leads to developmental reversals, especially in the areas of expressive language and hand use. And the syndrome predominantly affects girls. The International Rett Syndrome Foundation, the IRSF, established in July 2007, quite recently, is the largest private source of funds for biomedical and clinical research on Rett syndrome. The foundation directs almost 90% of each dollar donated directly to program services. IRSF believes the fastest way to cure and to treatments, including making a significant and strategic investment in research while bolstering family support, public awareness, and advocacy programs. And so we here in Los Angeles in these chambers wanted to make sure we're a part of that effort, part of that awareness, part of the research, and part of movement forward. The organization sponsors the annual Rett Syndrome Symposium, which gathers researchers and clinicians from around the world to exchange the latest information and set new research directions. And each year, there's an International Rett Syndrome Foundation Conference, which provides continuing education opportunities and connections to parents, family members, therapists, teachers, physicians, and other individuals involved in the day-to-day care of individuals with Rett syndrome. And each year, the conference is held in different parts of the United States. The tireless work to advocate for and raise awareness about individuals with Rett syndrome so the scientific and medical community policymakers, educators, caregivers, and general public can more thoroughly heighten the awareness about Rett syndrome and what can be done to give a cure is really what this group of individuals does. So I would like to invite Sylvia Baker forward to say a few words, and let's all welcome our guests that are here today, making sure that we make a difference with those individuals who have Rett syndrome.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. First of all, we'd like to thank you for having us here, and we're very excited. Rett syndrome is a devastating neurological disorder that affects primarily, almost exclusively, girls. There's a girl born every 90 minutes with Rett syndrome. However, their families will not know that they are affected with Rett syndrome for at least 18 months. At that point, their lives will take a dramatic change. The girls, if they were speaking, they will lose their speech. If they were walking, they will lose the ability to walk. They'll eventually lose the ability to use their hands purposefully. However, we're making great strides with research. They have been able to reverse the effects in mice. So we're hoping that in the very near future, that will be something that they'll be able to reverse in our girls, and they will lead healthy, happy lives, walking, running, speaking, yelling with all of their peers. We have, through a lot of therapy, the girls, some of the girls are able to walk. My daughter wasn't able to walk. She's six years old. At five, she was able to start walking independently. And she's happy, she's healthy. All of the girls are healthy. Some of the things that they're affected with are debilitating seizures, the inability to swallow after some time, scoliosis. But they all speak with their eyes. What they can't say with their words, they can say with their eyes. So it's incredible. It's absolutely incredible. I'd like to bring up Sheri Brady.
Hi. Again, my name's Sheri Brady. I am the Southern California Regional Rep for the International Rett Syndrome Foundation. And thank you again for having us today, and thank you for giving us this opportunity. As Sylvia said, Rett is very rare. Okay, Lauren, I got it. She has a few words she'd like to share. Because of the once-in-ninety-minutes, a lot of doctors, a lot of therapists, a lot of teachers actually have never even heard of Rett syndrome. So it's incredibly hard for us to get the education and the support, the therapy and the services that our children need. So you guys helping us spread the awareness will help improve that and get our girls what they need so that we can keep them the healthiest and the best that they can be so that cure that we know is going to come any day now, they're ready for it when it does come. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And if folks want to find out more information, do you have a website?
Yes, it's www.rettsyndrome.org.
And that's R-E-T-T.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. President. We appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Lovely to get this special group another big, big, big hand. So, Mr. Clerk, in the intervening moments, please call the roll.
Hello, Conbuske, O'Kartness, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Corretts, Kukorian, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Wesson, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Alakon moves. Mr. Corretts seconds. So ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilman Parks moves. Councilman Kukorian seconds. So ordered.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, before running through the agenda, let me state that a communication from the Transportation Committee Chair for Item 4 has been submitted and circulated for council's approval. A public hearing has not been satisfied in that matter. Further, there are requests from members to continue Item 1 to November 13, Item 2 to October 19, Item 15 to November 9. And there's also been a request to refer Item 13 back to the Audits and Governmental Efficiency Committee, sir.
So let's order that. That's so approved. What's in front of us right now, Mr. Clerk?
Having moved those off the desk, that brings us to Items 2 through 4. Again, Items 2 through 4. Item 2 was continued to 1019. And Item 3 should be held for a forthcoming Public Safety Committee report.
That was it, Item 3. Forthcoming report for today? Will we get that report in?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, so let's set that on the desk.
Very good.
Any specials, members? Just Joe?
Item 5, please.
Item 5 is special?
Hold 5. Hold 5.
Hold 5. And, Mr. Clerk, give me that direction?
Yes, sir. For that section, we have Item 4 remaining on the board, so.
Item 4 remaining on the board. That's very good. So on the remaining items? Do any remaining items? 3?
Item 4, sir.
No, item 4.
3 is being held on the desk, and Item 2 is continued.
So we have no action on this group?
Item 4, sir.
Item 4.
Unless another member would like to call it special.
No one called it special?
We could then open the roll.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Zine.
On 13 and 15.
We're not there yet, Mr. Zine. So Item 4. Okay. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Items 5 through 14 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Mr. President, we do have cards for items in that section. We have cards for Items 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 12, and 14.
Okay, so right now, we should open the roll for consideration on that?
Unless any of the other members wish to call the remaining.
Any other specials? Any other specials? Mr. Corretts, good morning. Any other specials? No, we're good. Mr. Zine, you have a question?
You start to refer to AG.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. So no other questions on those remaining items that were not called special by cards? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Good. Next item.
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, oh, excuse me, that item was continued to It would be appropriate at this point in time to go back to presentations, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Appreciate that. Now I'd like to call on the great councilman of the 1st District, who's worked so hard on so many projects to relate to the birth of Los Angeles and its great Los Angeles River. Please welcome Councilmember Ed Reyes.
Thank you very much, Council President. This is a presentation that's going to try to cover as much ground as possible in the short amount of time, but I do want to take a moment to thank our guests who are here from the federal government. We had Congress Member Lucille Romayeller, a member of the Appropriations Committee this morning, who I thank for making the trip out of City Hall. Also with us in the audience, we have our Senator Kevin DeLeon. Please stand. Good to have you here, sir. And our Senate member Gil Sadio, who joined us as well, and they've been part of a team. Let's give them a round of applause. They've been part of a team that's had a multi-jurisdictional effort in the past 11 years, 10 years, in putting together the River Master Plan and implementation of the River projects. It doesn't happen alone. We have tremendous support from the federal government, from the Army Corps of Engineers. And we have with us David Van Dorpe, who's representing Colonel Toy. And David, if you're still here, please stand. Thank you, sir. Thank you for joining us. And in the community, we have several community members that are here, and if you're out in the audience, please stand. Let's recognize all our community advocates, our river advocates, our neighborhood advocates. Thank you so much for joining us for this 10-year anniversary of the River Master Plan and the development of our Los Angeles River. And next to me is our great city engineer, who I think for the next century will be recognized in one of the most instrumental departments, along with Enrique Salivar Bureau of Sanitation, in breaking down the silos of our departments and forming strategic cooperation between departments. And the thank yous I'll give at the end, but it is, I am truly grateful. The first time we had our Ad-Hoc River Committee was at the river. It was on the Broadway Bridge in Lincoln Heights, connecting to Chinatown. We held the meeting there. We had all the family, city family there, as well as community folks, and we discussed, and we can go to the first slide, our guiding principles. And the guiding principles for the Ad-Hoc River Committee was to, one, recognize the vision and the priorities of each community along the river corridor, to bring forward the type of environmental ecosystem rejuvenation opportunism so that we can actually bring back the life of the river in a way that reflects its greatness in our history. Because without this river, as Tom Labanche has reminded us many times, without that river, we would not have the city of Los Angeles. Other principles spoke to economic development, it spoke to environmentalism, but more importantly, it spoke to connecting communities and having communities be able to engage. And the mantra I've been using throughout these years is converting our backyard into our front yard. On 2002, I'd like to ask Gary if you could...
I just want to say thank you, Councilman Reyes. It's a real honor and pleasure to be here with you this morning, representing all the numerous departments that are so involved in the river revitalization. And I would like, as we go through each slide here, we're going to do one slide for each year, and we'll go through it very quickly. I do want to call out also in 2002, the first, the Alex Baum Bridge over Los Feliz was opened in 2002, and it was really the beginning of people recognizing what the river could be and connecting the bike path.
So as you can see in this photo, you'll have instrumental folks who've been part of this process. Our great mayor, Antonio Benignoza, from the very beginning, has been a steward and supporter at every turn. So I'm always grateful to him and thank him and his team for being part of this process. You can see here Wendy Grill, who is now our controller, Councilman Garcetti, Councilor Jan Perry, and Councilman Labanche, all members of this committee. And I have certificates of appreciation to make sure that the presentation is complete, and I will do that towards the end. As we move forward, the next year, the greatest impacts that we've had are in your bullet, but I'll just cover one area, and that is that the task force was established interdepartmental. That's when we start actually formalizing how each department, the CEO, Building and Safety, Police Department, Fire Department, all the departments coming together and forming this task force to make the corridor safer, cleaner, and more desirable, and again promoting the multifunctional aspects of this.
L.A. County has always been a partner, and they adopted their river signage also in 2003.
2004, we see with the great help of Councilmember Perry and Councilman Garcetti, who were real champions in the fundraising and the development of this particular proposition proposal, we were able to raise with the support of our constituency, our voters, 500 million, in which we were able to now look at water quality measures. You see products of those efforts, the Eco Park, which is going through its transition, a whole range of other water-related issues that connect to the river, because once the water travels from our streets, it enters the river and onto the ocean.
Moving on to 2005, one of the biggest efforts that we're so proud of is the launching of the Los Angeles River Revitalization Master Plan. And obviously, it would not have been possible without the mayor and the city council, but I definitely want to thank the Department of Water and Power, who funded this study. And it was, it's been now the guide for all of us as we move forward.
One of the impacts that we wanted to address was the impacts of plastics, plastic bags, plastic products, styrofoam. There's other technical terms for it, but it boils down to its blinding contamination. So the plastic industry task force was established, and again, you can see there, Tom Labanche and Louis McAdams from the river. And, look, Tom. Okay, he doesn't want to look. Keep going, please.
We'll move on to 2000, whoops, back up to 2006 there. I think one of the exciting things here is we started to see the important partnership with the Los Angeles River Ecosystem Restoration Feasibility with the Army Corps began. And this is really the opportunity where we can remove the concrete from the river, this partnership. And also, we had the very exciting, the opening of the Rio de Los Angeles Park.
And at that juncture, we have with us our Senator Barbara Boxer, who put together resources in the Word of Fund, I believe it's about $20 million for us to access. And we also had a tremendous event with the youth conference that was held. We had hundreds and hundreds of youth, local high school, junior colleges, students engaging, architects, engineers about the river. Please, thanks.
In 2007, your council here adopted the Revitalization Master Plan, and also the 40-acre Rio de Los Angeles State Park opened.
We have authorized that that year... We have authorized at that year twenty-five million from Congress, and with the reopening up, the Los Angeles State Park, we can see the lungs of our downtown air beginning to form through these great green pockets. The L.A. River Corps begins its work. These are young men and women, uh, from, uh, different parts of the city who are learning, they're, uh, getting, uh, opportunities to, uh, get familiar with different disciplines, uh, but they're also the ones you see in the hot days, early mornings, out to clean the river, cleaning our streetways, looking at our greenways, our waterways throughout the city, uh, tremendous work. Uh, they are stewards with our canoe program, and I'll speak to that a little bit later.
And Congressman Roy Ballard holds her first Los Angeles River Day on Capitol Hill, and once again, we know what a great and important partnership the federal government is in this project.
In D.C., to that note, we had close to eighteen different congressmembers involved. Uh, we had, I believe, thirteen congressmen sign one letter and support this effort. Again, the federal role begins to increase. Next.
Two thousand and nine, um, the, the most important, uh, another important partner, obviously, is Los Angeles County, and there was an, uh, memorandum of understanding signed by both the city and the county, and it really has, uh, brought together our partnership on making sure projects are done jointly along the river. And then we made a major purchase.
The purchase is the Albion, very side of Lincoln Heights. Uh, we added a significant green pocket that's still in construction, but we are designing it so that it captures the stormwater, revitalizes our aquifer, as well as promote a greenway. Next.
In two thousand and ten, uh, Administrator, UPS, United States EPA Administrator Lisa Jackson joins the mayor and council members on July seventh, reaffirming the protection of this, uh, Clean Water Act, and that the Los Angeles River is a traditionally navigable waterway. And this continues to, uh, know what we all, uh, believe in, that it will, uh, that has led us to the, uh, being a waterway.
In that picture, you'll see Nancy Suddly, you'll see, uh, Lisa Jackson, uh, we've had Secretary of Interior Ken Salazar, uh, many of the, uh, the board and the cabinet of our great President Obama has been part of this process, and, uh, uh, we were able to, uh, show them the potential here, and they've been great, great partners. Uh, next slide.
Yes, I also want to thank Deputy Mayor, uh, Romel Pasquale for his continued stewardship as the Deputy for the Environment.
And Romel's been one of the unsung heroes. Thank you, Romel. I personally want to say thank you in public for all of your great work. Uh, we hold our first, mayor holds first L.A. River Day of Service, uh, but just as important, we actually get to touch the water, get to float on the water, uh, as it becomes a navigable water body, uh, we change its status and now becomes a candidate for Clean Water Act funds, and it becomes, uh, essentially a focal point for the kind of diversion and recreation to help address the obesity that impacts diabetes, uh, for the large number of youth in our city that are currently falling into this disease.
In two thousand and twelve, here, in January, U.S. Secretary of the Interior Ken Salazar came to our newly opened North Atwater Park to celebrate, uh, the L.A. River Trail in America's Great Outdoors as part of the, uh, federal government's effort to get people out.
Again, um, one of the major aspects of, of trying to establish, uh, pockets of opportunity throughout the river is to reinforce the fact that it is a citywide slash regional effort. Uh, as you can see in the last page, uh, Gary was reminding me that when we first started this map, they were all essentially, uh, blue dots. Nothing had happened. But now you can see that we have quite a few in the green dot stage, which is in design, red dots in construction, and we have at least five or six that have been completed. So, thanks to you, colleagues. On the side, you can see some of the projects that have been actually accomplished. Uh, this does not even include the, the millions of dollars that are part of the bridge, uh, rebuild program, which the bridges have been redesigned to connect with the river and have a role with our bike paths. It does not speak to all of the other efforts that are on the next page, which is, these are instruments, colleagues, instruments that we will use to create revenue for this city, and that's so important in the future. These are opportunities to use our planning police powers, looking at our partnerships, the land we own, we own as a city, can now be redesigned, redeveloped with what's coming up soon, the cornfield, the road-specific plan, where we introduce new entitlements for bodies of property up and down, uh, the area along Chinatown and Lincoln Heights. And lastly, the last slide is a big thank you to you all. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, President, for allowing me to have this presentation. Uh, as you can see, we have many partners in this. I want to thank the city family, Gary Moore. Uh, I want to thank my staff, Lupe Vela and, uh, Jill Soliel, uh, the whole team that has been part of this, great, great effort. Uh, in the last slide, uh, there's a quote there, "These are indeed competing notions of restoration, but the river is fifty-one miles long, lined with as much possibility as concrete." My hope is that we will have the opportunity to invite our president to be at the river bank and demonstrate how we can create nineteen thousand jobs just taking the cement out. Uh, that will be a major economic stimulus, and with that, uh, I'd love to call on my colleagues just to give them the certificate.
One second, uh, Mr. Reyes, and I do want to say, you know, you've really carried the water on this, you've done a phenomenal job with the city partners. Uh, this was a dream, and now it's on the verge of really becoming a reality. But there are two members that'd like to say something before you do the presentation. I'd like to call on Mr. Paul Corretts. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ed, I just wanted to congratulate and thank you and your team for getting us in the river and this far. It's, it's an amazing plan, um, and it was the river, as it was said, that originally transformed Los Angeles, but I think it's going to be the river that's going to transform it again. And, uh, I want to thank you for the role that you've played in this. A hundred years from now, when people look at this vibrant, living river, and they look back and try to figure out how we got to that good point, uh, they'll remember your name. I think this is the greatest legacy of your time on the council, and just want to thank you for all the work that you've put in making this happen.
Thank you, those kind words, and thank you, support.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, uh, very much, Mr. President. And, Mr. Reyes, I'd just rise to thank you for allowing me to be a passenger in the kayak along there with you. Um, this was not only officially an un-navigable river when we started, but the political waters were pretty un-navigable, and you brought those players together. I've been and seen this man at work in Washington, D.C., in the halls of Congress. I've seen him with generals flying, uh, overhead in a helicopter. I've seen him with county officials, city officials, with every stakeholder. If we tried to create the most complicated, the most complicated structure we could in the world, I don't think we would've come up with how many different layers there are along the Los Angeles River. Um, but you showed us a pathway. You told us this was where the city started, this is where the city's future lies. Um, I was glad to be your wingman as vice chair for a few years there, but, uh, Mr. Reyes, we've accomplished so much already, and the most exciting part of, uh, unpaving the river, which I know is our next step. Think about, though, in ten years, the number of pocket parks, the number of projects, um, the changed attitude. In, in the days when we ran, I think, for office, it was still kind of a fringe issue to say, "Hey, I care about the L.A. River," and people would say, you know, pat you on the head and say, "Nice fringe candidate." You can't run for office in this city without saying that the river is going to be the core of what we do. Prop O, the great work that now we're able to actually see fish jumping there, and whether it's legal or not to fish there, we know that folks are eating fish out of the river that are healthier today than fish out of the bay. That's your legacy. I know this is your last year officially in office, but we've got big plans for you to continue being our captain along the river. Congratulations to you, Gary Lee Moore, who's also been in that kayak alongside and all the other supporters, and the community who came out to all the meetings that you set up, because now we have literally tens of thousands of stakeholders who have come down to the river and participated in that turnaround, and that's something that you can look back on for the rest of your life and be extremely proud of, Mr. Reyes. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. President. You have a heart of gold, Ed, and, and passion, it's incredible. When I look through these photos, it shows two thousand and two, a young Ed Reyes, a very young Eric Garcetti, a very young mayor, a very young Tom LaBange, John Perry. When you look at the time that spanned from two thousand and two to where we are today, it's taken its toll, but what it's done is made it, Los Angeles, a better place, and your commitment, your undying commitment, dedication to this, traditionally, for the last almost twelve years. I remember when we first elected, you talked about the river, you talked about the headway up in my district, and how it's gonna connect, and we're seeing the progress take place. And Gary Lee Moore, engineer, you weren't the engineer at that time, I think you were trying to become the engineer.
Right. Nine years ago, I became city engineer.
And so, this commitment, this dedication, and what, uh, this will turn out to be the future generations that'll enjoy it. But Ed, you've done a phenomenal job, and I can only commend you, as my colleagues have done, and the people of Los Angeles, who don't really see the vision that you've seen from the great days at UCLA, when you said, "I'm gonna do something for Los Angeles, you're gonna put your stamp on Los Angeles for time and all eternity." I want to commend you. Your dedication has finally paid off, your determination, your persistence, you've done it with class, you've done it in a successful fashion, so congratulations to you, and to the colleagues that worked alongside with you. But Eric Garcetti looks older, he's got gray hair now. But you know what? It's all come about, it's all come about.
At least I still have some.
There you do have some.
Oh! Okay, calm down, boys, calm down.
With that, with that, I just want to say, Ed, keep the, keep the charge going, because I know there's a future in this endeavor. It will make Los Angeles a better place for all, so congratulations to you.
Thank you, Dennis, thank you so much.
Not yet, Joey B. Uh, Mr. Weezer, with the full, beautiful head of hair.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Weston. That's why you are our council president. You don't pick fights with anybody. I, I too just wanted to stand up and commend Mr. Reyes and now the, the people from Bureau of Engineering, everyone who's made this possible, and, uh, you know, we, you, Mr. Reyes, the last few years, you've planted some seeds to green the river, and some of them are beginning to sprout, and as Mr., uh, our, um, our esteemed friend Eric here alluded to, um, you know, we've seen some things sprout, but I think in the next few years, what you're planting now, what you're doing now, it's gonna blossom, and it's gonna blossom into a beautiful, green river. There's been so much work ahead of us, and one thing that we've worked on recently, as we've worked to get a new six-string bridge, is ask some of the proposals to connect that bridge with the river. So, it's not about a bridge connecting Bull Heights to downtown over the river, but it's about connecting A and B and C in the middle to the river, and a lot of that, I think, wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for your work on the Ad-Hoc River and thinking ahead about the possibilities. So, I was happy to, uh, be on the Ad-Hoc Committee with you. I saw your passion, your commitment, and, um, we're gonna make sure that this moves forward. Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Reyes, for your work on this, and I look forward to working on this with all of you as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just excited to stand. I understand Mr. Reyes had a full set of hair ten years ago.
I got pictures approved.
Before this project started.
I've got pictures approved.
But I, I have just learned in a short time here, um, in, in, in this horseshoe, Mr. Reyes, um, um, knowing of your, your love and compassion and your commitment to this, um, this project is, uh, just inspiring for me as, as a young legislator here. And, um, you have, uh, taught me a lot of the importance of not giving up and, and dreaming big. And here we are today, and working with Gary Lee Moore and his team to know that it's coming to fruition. It's amazing what a waterline can do. Can really bring people together, uh, create economic development, put people to work, and that's something that I'm dreaming big, and out the L.A. waterfront.
Absolutely.
Um, and to know that just recently, last week, we had eight submittals from credible developers who are interested in developing our L.A. waterfront, is, I mean, I, I, I share your love and compassion and dedication to, uh, our respective waterlines, but congratulations, God bless you, and, uh, thanks for dreaming big.
Thank you, thank you, Joey.
Mr. Tom LaBonghi.
Two hundred and thirty-one years ago, forty-four people walked nine miles from the Mission San Gabriel to the banks of the river to form the Pueblo. In these last ten years, Ed Reyes has put so many people together to focus and change it, so I had to stand for you, Ed. I love what you have done. Yesterday was a great celebration in his district in Lincoln Heights, uh, where they created a spot which is so special, which I know everyone will hear about soon, but Gary Lee and everybody, Ed, and also, where are the Rhodes Scholars going? There's the Rhodes Scholars going, they're all the way from New York. Away, folks! We do have a river here out in California, so people come now to L.A. River and not, uh, one of my best friends, uh, is in heaven, uh, Annette Cordona grew up by Doris Place. She played cha-cha in Grease. She danced in the river and started that race at Thunder Road. You've created thunder to make things happen on the river, Ed. Thank you so much, and Gary Lee, and where's Shelley? Shelley, back our stand-up again. Did you see the group from Munich who came in and they eased our river? Other cities are studying our work. Thank you, everybody, good job.
Thank you, Tommy.
Ed Reyes. Um, when, uh...
It's not a roast, it's a...
It's not a roast?
It's a river celebration.
It's a river celebration. Well, where's Mr. Zine? I thought it was gonna be a roast, I wanted to go after Zine again. There he is. It's like Sasquatch, running across the council chambers. When, uh, when I started working with, uh, with Greg, and he wanted to focus on trash, and I thought, wow, this is gonna be exciting, this is riveting, what a sexy, sexy issue, trash. Um, he said, you know, "If we can do something as elected officials while we're working on all the other issues we're dealing with, on planning matters, on land use matters, on policing, and potholes, and infrastructure, on the budget, but we can focus on something that's gonna last a lifetime, that we can focus on a legacy to get it even initiated, something that might not be popular, but that's gonna make a tremendous difference for generations to come. If we could do something that's the right thing to do while we're working on all the other noise, to clean up all the other issues, because it's gonna improve the lives of Angelinos and improve forever the city of Los Angeles, then we will have done something right." And when we renewed, we released Renew L.A., we did exactly that. And at the same time, while he was working on that, you're working on the L.A. River. And to see what has occurred already surpassed even my wildest expectations. But you talk about a true legacy, it'll be my children's children that'll call it the Reyes River. It'll be my, my grandchildren that'll look at it and say, "Wow, we're gonna go dining and riding our bicycles and walking down the L.A. River," um, which was one of the biggest mistakes the Army Corps of Engineers ever did, was to cement the whole thing in. And the whole idea that you're un-cementing and you're creating a great place for people to go and attract homes and businesses and, and, and enjoy, one of the main reasons people come to, uh, Los Angeles is the great weather, and that we're gonna have, and a river runs through it, uh, and to attract that and bring it back. I applaud you, because if all of us can stand up at, at, or nearing the end of our terms and say, you know, "We, we got involved in something that wasn't a sexy, sexy issue at the beginning, it wasn't something that everybody said, 'Yes, this is the most important issue facing L.A.,' but continue to focus on all those other important issues and continue to drive and see their vision through fruition, then we will have been a big success." So, my heart goes out to you. You've truly been a great mentor and inspiration and a good friend, and congratulations on all the efforts on this. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, back to you.
Council President, this does not happen alone. I have a certificate here for my colleagues, Councilman Tom LaBange, Councilman Jose Weezer, Councilman Garcetti, Councilman John Perry, we also have one for Wendy Grul, and I say thank you to you all for your patience, your support. My heart goes out to the city family who worked nights, weekends, uh, the leadership of our great departments, and my staff. I just want to say thank you to Jose Garde, my chief of staff, who's been a major steward in this, uh, we look at Lupe Vela, Jill Soliel, Rebecca, I mean, the whole group. Thank you, guys. Appreciate this very much, and...
No, thank you.
God bless.
Let's give Mr. Reyes, L.A. River, another round of applause. As, uh, Mr. Weezer makes his way to the podium to begin our Filipino-American Heritage Month celebration, I'd like to inform everyone that Guy, where's Guy? Eric? Where's Guy? Anyway, that Guy, raise your hand, Guy. Guy from Eric Garcetti's office has adopted Mikey, the little dog. The little dog has a home, so our dog adoption rate is one hundred percent still. With that said, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Garcetti. Boy, that's a good-looking crowd you guys have up there. Good-looking crowd. And, uh, Richard Alacon is part of this great celebration as well.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. I must say you look dapper today in your, uh, nice, uh, outfit. Um, and colleagues, I am happy to celebrate four hundred and twenty-five years of Filipino-American heritage here in the city of Los Angeles, and today we are with a number of members of the Filipino-American community, and also with members of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees. with members of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees. And now, as a little background, the month of October is significant as our first recorded presence of Filipinos in the continental United States, and that occurred back in October 18th of 1587, when natives identified as Lusones Indios came ashore from a Spanish galleon at what is now Morro Bay, California. And with an estimated 3.4 million Filipino-Americans living in the United States, this community is an important part of our country's history and culture. There are an estimated half a million Filipinos living in the city of Los Angeles, and there's no doubt that we would not be the great city that we are today without the contributions that they bring each and every day to the city of Los Angeles. I want to welcome all our guests here this morning, and I want to give a special recognition to Cora Aragon Soriano. Let's give her a round of applause. She is the president of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees. And as we all know, Filipinos have contributed so much to not only Los Angeles, but to our country. And I talk every year about the proud military service during World War II, which, by the way, continues, they continue to serve us till today. But I talk about their military service in World War II in particular because for decades, Filipino veterans did not get the recognition they so richly deserved from the United States government. And thankfully, in 2009, the US government, through an order by President Obama, finally gave them the partial reparation payments they were entitled to for fighting on our nation's behalf during the Second World War. And that victory was not about money. It was not about them receiving their benefits. It was more about them finally receiving the recognition that they so well-earned and deserved. And so as long as I am elected official and we have events like this, I will mention the contributions that Filipinos gave during World War II and the United States' final commitment to recognize them and their service. But as we all know, the contributions to our society by the Filipino people do not end on the battlefield. Here in Los Angeles, where we have the largest population of Filipinos living outside of the Philippines, Filipino-Americans have distinguished themselves in every part of civic life. They represent a number of our doctors, our business owners, our neighbors, our friends, our teachers, and you needn't look no further than our Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees to see the scope of their achievements. As I say every year, we could be less of a city without Filipino-Americans, and we would certainly be less of a country without their contributions, and we celebrate them each and every year. So I want to acknowledge La Face, and I also want to acknowledge a few individuals who are here with us today, Tony Cartagena and his wife, a council member of Walnut. Welcome.
Hello.
Colonel Shirley Rakidin, welcome. Daniel Espirito, Acting Head of Council General, thank you for being with us. Charmaine Chua from the Consul's Office. Rowena Sierra, Cultural Officer. Eric Sierra, Information Officer. Donald Plata from Washington, welcome. Is it raining up in Washington, too?
Yeah, it was.
It was, too, right?
It's always raining.
It's always raining. Maria Manny from New York, welcome. So with that, if you would permit me, Council President, I'd ask my colleague, Councilmember Eric Garcetti, has been no stranger to the Filipino-American community, representing Filipino-American, historic Filipino town in central part of Los Angeles. Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. And you've got Philippine Village, we've got historic Filipino town, but there's really no district that doesn't have Filipino-Americans in it that have contributed greatly to the life of the city. And Cora, thank you for being such a great leader, and La Face, and all of the city employees here in my own office, of course, Eduardo Soriano Hewitt and Ryan Carpio, both Filipino-Americans who are here and who have been a huge part of so many individuals that have made this city what it is. As Mr. Weezer mentioned, Filipino-Americans have contributed at every facet, but one of the areas where we have lacked representation is actually in elected office. And I'm so proud of my dear friend from graduate school, somebody I've known for almost 20 years, Rob Bonta, who is on the verge of being the first elected Filipino-American member of the state legislature. And while we can't campaign here, should that happen, I think we would all be very proud. It's in Northern California, but we, Rob, we are rooting for you. And I'm so proud to stand today with Filipino-Americans to declare October as Filipino-American History Month in the city of Los Angeles. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Alacan, and others who have always been a part of recognizing Filipino heritage. But we all know the author, the Filipino-American author Carlos Bulosan, who wrote "America is in the Heart." And I want to share his words with you. He said, "America is not bound by geographical latitudes. America is not merely a land or an institution. America is in the hearts of men that died for freedom. It is also in the eyes of men that are building a new world." Filipino-Americans who came here were part of building a new world. Our own city's story, I always think it's a fitting metaphor that the original 46 pobladores included two Filipinos who were misclassified as Chinos in Spanish, Chinese, who came from Baja California. They didn't make the full journey, and in some ways, it's a fitting metaphor for what we still have left undone while so many came after them. We still have to do what we can to make sure that the history of the Filipino-Americans is told, whether it's the Inquil boys that were in what's now historic Filipino town who couldn't live downtown but who did the great work of all the clerks of the time, whether we look at those who fought bravely for our freedoms, and it's so near and dear to my heart because my grandfather, who was here as an undocumented immigrant, fought in the Philippines in World War II and came back as a citizen and got his benefits and got his citizenship, and that's why I fought so hard for that to happen. But we also know that the Filipino-American contributions, the pioneers like Carlos Bulosan, so many of you here who are true pioneers, who have worked, who have sacrificed and left the motherland to be here in America. So I'm proud to represent one of the most diverse populations in this city, but also one of the strongest populations of Filipinos anywhere in the world. And it's important that we all continue to highlight the contributions of Filipino-Americans to understand the beautiful history and heritage, the fights, the triumphs, the hopes and the resilience spirit of our Filipino-American brothers and sisters, mabuhay ang nagal Filipino-Americans.
Thank you. And next, no stranger as well to the Filipino-American community, our council member from the valley, Richard Alacan.
It is indeed my pleasure to again join with my colleagues to recognize Filipino Heritage Month. The San Fernando Valley is a place where Filipinos are growing in large number. In fact, it is one of the fastest-growing communities in the San Fernando Valley. My grammar school, Holy Rosy, Our Lady of Holy Rosy in Sun Valley, is now 50% Filipino. My high school of two years, St. Genevieve's High School, the high school is 63% Filipino, and the elementary school is about 80% Filipino. Clearly, this community is growing and is vibrant. One thing I do want to mention about St. Genevieve's, after the Columbine shooting, the parents of the victims of the Columbine shooting created a national award, and it's called the National Character Award. St. Genevieve's was one of the first recipients of that award, and I think that the Filipino community largely contributed to their ability to have that. So long before we were talking about anti-bullying efforts, St. Genevieve's was actually implementing programs to teach kids about values and respect for each other and how to treat people with dignity. In fact, if you walk down the hallways of St. Genevieve's today, the students will salute you, say hello, greet you with a smile. So it's a very special school, and I believe it is such because of the large influx of Filipinos. So we have had the opportunity to recognize, and yes, my father also served with Filipinos in World War II in the Philippines and speaks to their tremendous courage and bravery against all odds. And of course, I've had the opportunity to recognize Filipinos, for example, the Filipinos who inspired the great boycott and the strike many years ago and have largely been ignored in terms of their historical role in the farmworker movement, upgrading working conditions for farmworkers. We also recognized and scolded a TV show when they disparaged Filipinos for their tremendous contributions in the health industry. And so I stood with Filipinos to recognize their contributions in the health field because without Filipinos in our health system in California, quite frankly, we would be in dire straits. In fact, we do struggle, but we need, but without the Filipino community, our health system would be severely challenged. And so for all those reasons, we are here to celebrate the contributions of the Filipino-American community. They are contributing at every level, in every way, in diverse ways to our community to make it a true representation of the history of America, and we welcome their contributions as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And another council member who's worked very closely with the Filipino-American community, Councilmember Ed Reyes from the Great First District.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to stand and say thank you and congratulate the Filipino community for all they've done for our great city, our region. In MacArthur Park, there is a statue, and there is actually a layout of the Philippines there memorializing their great contribution to our country, our history in MacArthur Park. And I've had the joy of working with the Filipino community, many different opportunities. Just recently, in Lincoln Park, there was a great gathering where you had regional representation with food and music staged, and I'd say a good quarter of Lincoln Park was covered, and it was a tremendous event. I got to share in some of the food, and again, it is a great reflection of our diversity here in Los Angeles. But individuals, too, Gerald Gubatan, who was with my office, I believe, also with Councilman Alacan, is a true leader. He's always working in the community. The leadership here, I want to say thank you because of the impact it made for our youth in building up our self-esteem, our identity, and making sure we continue forward as a great city. So for that, I say congratulations and thank you, my colleagues. Well, I'm going to speak for these few moments. Thank you so much.
Mr. Weezer, I have a couple of members on the queue. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to our great Filipino community. Many of the city workers are of the Filipino heritage, and they do such a great job in the city of Los Angeles, serving the people. The man who services our district office, Filipino, a man who has a heart of gold, Felix is out there helping the people, not only in the community, but also at the West Valley Municipal Building. And there's so many in the city family. I know we have some deputy city attorneys here hiding over there, but you can wave your hand, let people know you're still here, deputy city attorney. What we have is a focus of humanity that has great hearts. Mr. Alacan touched on it, the health care. If it wasn't for the nurses coming from the Filipino background to help people, to have a heart of gold, to help those that are in need, I don't know what we'd do with our health care industry. But they're there, they're willing, they're supportive, they're living the American dream, and they're so supportive of the American dream and so supportive of family environment. I had lunch yesterday with a representative from the Bachmann family at Mr. Englander's luncheon honoring police and fire, and a wife of one of the Bachmann Filipino, we were talking about the Philippines and what a beautiful lady she is and how happy she is being here in America, but coming from the Philippines, what a beautiful life and what a beautiful opportunity. So while we honor many different groups here in the city council, the different diversity that we have, Mr. Garcetti, part of that great diversity, being honored by the Middle Eastern community shortly, what we show is that the love and the compassion is here. So the Filipino community, thank you for all you do, and thank you, colleagues, for bringing them forward to celebrate this great opportunity. Thank you all. God bless you all. Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, and thank you, colleagues, for having this celebration of our Filipino heritage and our friends. As you know, San Pedro and Point Farm and Park is home to the Filipino Arts Festival. I had an opportunity to bring my family and share the great food of lumpia and chicken adobo just recently, this last month. Also, I want to highlight just one of my team members, Lulu DiAngle, who is of Filipino descent. I haven't seen the lumpia come through the office just yet, but we're working on that. But like many cultures in the city and specifically Italians, Filipinos are really focused on family and faith and community. And to know that Mary Star of the Sea, my parish, is home to one of the largest Filipino ministries is just refreshing to know just that. So we want to thank you, congratulate you, and we welcome you and embrace your culture in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Tom Labonge.
Abaga humaga hapun, Makati sister city, salamat.
Mr. Labonge said he would be 10 seconds, and he was less than that, so I'm very impressed. No, you don't have to get back up to get your other three and a half seconds. Anyway, Mr. Weezer, all I have to say is that I wore my best barong to show my respect to each and every one of you and my love. So with that said, I want to turn it...
Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Plus, it's really pretty comfortable.
It is.
We should start a new dress code here. Anyway, I'm turning it back to you, Mr. Weezer.
I would love that, and take off this tight tie on my neck. But with that, let me introduce to you Daniel Espirito, the Acting Head of Council General. Welcome.
Honorable members of the City Council of Los Angeles, with Councilman Weson presiding, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. On behalf of the Filipino-American community in Los Angeles and the Philippine Council General in Los Angeles, allow me to express to you our deepest appreciation for proclaiming this month, October, as the Filipino-American History Month. Let me also thank in this regard Councilman Eric Garcetti, Councilman Weezer, Councilman Alacan, and Councilman Reyes, and as well as the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees for making this event possible. Ladies and gentlemen, it used to be that in the olden days, the primary barometer of relations among peoples and nations was government-to-government contact or diplomacy. But in today's world, with its transportation and communications revolution, it seems that the barometer has shifted. It's now people-to-people contact, people-to-people exchange. And in this framework, it seems that there's no more greater testament to the relations between Filipinos and Americans than via 3.4 million Filipinos in the United States and via half a million Filipinos in the county and the city of Los Angeles. Now, ladies and gentlemen, this proclamation for us signifies one of the highlights of immigrant life in America and one of the things that we most appreciate about America, the fact that America embraces the cultural diversity in this nation of immigrants and turns it into a national asset, national strength and national versatility, which makes this country great. Now, I'm very much confident that with this proclamation, the Filipino-Americans will be more inspired to come out, participate more widely in the mainstream life of this country, and contribute more to the beauty and richness of the tapestry that's the melting pot called America. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. And next, we have a special guest, Antonio Tony Cartagena. He's a council member from the city of Walnut. Welcome.
Thank you. Before I will present the commendations, two commendations from the city of Walnut, I would like to say a few words. Mr. President, members of the city council, Acting Council General Daniel Espirito, dignitaries, distinguished guests, friends, Cababayans, mi amigos, good morning, mabuhay.
Mabuhay. It is an honor and privilege for me to be a part of this memorable celebration, the 425 years of Filipino-American history in Los Angeles City Hall. The hopes and dreams and talented contributions from our forefathers, from other parts of the globe who built this great city of Los Angeles and our nation continues to be blessed with invaluable contributions from the Filipino-Americans and other multi-diverse citizens. I'm equally proud to join with our community members on this significant occasion in saluting the Filipino-Americans who have enriched and made a big difference in this great city of Los Angeles through their dedication, skills, and expertise as engineers, lawyers, accountant, law enforcement, public service, the veterans, nurses, doctors, among others. We are looking forward that Filipino-Americans will be involved much more in the political process in Los Angeles and this nation, that in the not-too-distant future, we can see Los Angeles Council Member or perhaps City Mayor with Filipino... Los Angeles council member or perhaps city mayor with Filipino-American ethnicity. In closing, on behalf of the city of Walnut, on behalf of the Filipino-Americans in this incredible valley, I would like to congratulate and extend my appreciation to all the members of the city council for your support and recognition of the many contributions made by the Filipino-Americans. Most importantly, thank you very much for this proclamation. Thank you. God bless you all. Dios de Bendiga. Salamat po sa inyong lahat. And I would like to give this commendation presented on behalf of the city of Walnut to Cora Aragon Soriano, president of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees. The city of Walnut extends sincere congratulations to our many friends in the city of Los Angeles on the occasion of your 425 years of Filipino-American history in Los Angeles City Hall. We commend the many invaluable contributions made by the Filipino-Americans in the city of Los Angeles. We extend sincere appreciation and best wishes. And another congratulation to one of the best cities in this nation, the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you all.
One of the best of the best. The city of Walnut extends sincere congratulations to our many friends in the city of Los Angeles on the occasion of your 425 years of Filipino-American history in Los Angeles City Hall. We commend the many valuable contributions made by the Filipino-Americans in the city of Los Angeles. We extend sincere appreciation and again, best wishes. Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Excuse me. And now, last but not least, we're going to hear from the president of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, none other than, you've seen her in the hallways, you've seen her working with us on a number of issues, Cora Aragon Soriano. Welcome, Cora.
Good morning. Council President Weston, I love you, barong. Thank you. And council members, thank you so much for this opportunity, for the recognition, and this is so important to us and truly appreciate you recognizing 425 years of the Filipino-American history in Los Angeles and, of course, the Filipino History Month. I would like to recognize our supporters, Councilmember Weezer and Garcetti and Aron Con, thank you, and your staff, thank you so much for supporting this important event. Very momentous. I've sent invitation to all of you to join us at the gala tonight because we've made a nationwide search for outstanding Filipinos nationwide, and we're honoring 21 awardees tonight. And please drop by and say hello to our awardees, and four of them are here, the highest ranking from Pentagon Shirley, Lieutenant Colonel Shirley Ragendin, Donald Plata, Janet Las Reyes from Alaska, and Maria Merkada. Truly, this tonight is a wonderful event, and they all have been selected and nominated. We had a hard time selecting them. We have with us also the interim council general, Daniel Espirito, and community leaders, very, very, the community leaders, and who else here? And of course, Cartagena, the councilman, and the Filipino community. We're also honored, one of the highest ranking in the Filipino staff here in this city is city attorney, Assistant City Attorney Ed Angeles is here. And Jaime de la Vega was here, I don't know if he's still here, he is our Assistant General Manager of Department of Transportation. Thank you very much. And may we invite you to join us at the ribbon cutting of the kickoff of our art gallery in our City Hall Bridge, and we have a small reception at the return. Mabuhay, and thank you, thank you so much for your support.
So Cora, if I can present this to you and to our acting council general, the acting council general, and this is a resolution signed by all the council members and the mayor, celebrating this 425th anniversary. Congratulations. And we, as a city, have been enriched with your culture, with your language, with your food, and your contributions. We, as Mr. Garcetti said, celebrate our diversity. That is what makes this city strong, and you have contributed to that significantly. Congratulations on behalf of the city.
I don't know where to look. There's the official on it there. Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Again, congratulations. Congratulations. Mitchell Englander for today's last presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we celebrate yet another amazing feature of California State University CSUN, which I'm proud to say is a world-class academic and scientific institution in my district. This Sunday, October 14th, is the 50th anniversary of CSUN's Language, Speech, and Hearing Center, and I'm happy to be joined by Janice Woolsey, our clinic coordinator at the center. The Language, Speech, and Hearing Center at the Department of Communications Disorders and Sciences at Cal State University Northridge is celebrating its golden anniversary on October 14th. For 50 years, the center has provided quality, affordable speech and language evaluation, treatment, and therapy to the Southern California community, improving lives one voice at a time. The center has more than 20 general and specialty clinics, including early intervention, stuttering articulation, and language therapy for school-aged children, accent reduction, which we're going to sign Joe up to get rid of that Italian accent, he signed up, auditory rehabilitation, adult neurological disorders, voice therapy, audiology, and an assistive communication device laboratory. The center has developed and maintained professional affiliations with health care organizations and institutions throughout Southern California for the benefit of its students as well as its professional partners and consumers. The center has been a significant forum for professional continuing education in speech-language pathology and audiology for professionals throughout our region. The center has over 12,000 client visits annually and generates more than 10,000 hours of student training and provides opportunities for professional calibration with colleges and alumni and all of their colleagues. The center has provided vital clinical training to CSUN's speech-language pathology and audiology students and has contributed to CSUN's having the highest number of graduates in speech-language pathology. So today, we officially declare October 14th, 2012, by the city of Los Angeles, CSUN's Language, Speech, and Hearing Center Day here in Los Angeles. Thank you very much. And if you could say a few words as well.
Please, one of you, say a few words.
Thank you very much. On behalf of our brand-new president at Cal State Northridge, Diane Harrison, I would like to thank you for this great honor. At our Language, Speech, and Hearing Center, we do, in fact, have two missions. We do treat the community, we serve the community in the San Fernando Valley, and we provide our training center for our academic program in Communication Disorders and Sciences. In a nutshell, we are changing lives one voice at a time. Thank you so much for this great honor.
No, thank you guys very much for all that you do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Clerk, let's go to item 16 real quick. Or is it item 16 or item 5?
16 is the special agenda item.
Yeah, we'll go to item 5. Sean Murphy and Dr. Tom Williams, please come forward. Morning, Mr. Murphy.
Good morning, President. Item 5 is a good item. I support it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Dr. Tom Williams.
That was pretty quick. Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, also interested party in CD1, especially when two weeks ago today, we had a meeting in the afternoon regarding key issues. One of the key issues for neighborhood councils is the community impact statement, which is lacking for this particular document. But that's not unusual for us because on the same day, we got a notification roundabout that there's a consolidated plan being prepared for the city of LA, including the Community Development Department and Affordable Housing Commission. So the question is, was anyone actually notified in the neighborhood council of this area so that they could input their community impact reports? I don't know. We don't know a lot of things because the mayor's office and the entire housing and community redevelopment groups are trying to keep things secret from the neighborhood councils, and we can't get the information, except that if one of the individuals within neighborhood councils receives it, maybe they'll pass it along. So we would like to have you table this or continue it to a later date and actually have the relevant neighborhood councils' input to it, since you do have a provision for community impact statements, and there's no indication that this particular project was even communicated to the neighborhood councils that are surrounding it. So we're trying to get our stakeholders to come.
Thank you. Thank you, doctor. Okay, Madam Clerk, just prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, Mr. Englander indicated, Mr. Clerk, that on item 3, his concerns have been dealt with, so let's take up item 3.
Yes, sir, if I may, the Public Safety Committee report from this morning's meeting has been circulated, and it's now before council.
Okay, so let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
So I guess that brings us to fourth with per Mr. Labange. Let's go to item 6, John Walsh on item 6.
John Walsh, charter member of the Anybody But Garcetti for Mayor campaign, just Google us.
Only item.
That's my introduction. You're always supposed to introduce yourself, aren't you? This is item number 6. We will, in fact, support you on item 6 if you support us by going to HollywoodHighlands.org. And incidentally, I know this is off the topic, but you won't stop me. You did a very good job around the building of establishing...
This is off-topic, Mr. President.
He didn't stop me. He didn't stop me.
John, 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 get back on... John, John. Mr. Walsh. Okay, on that item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Okay, that brings us, is it item 7, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Item 7, called Special for Cards.
Okay, I have Arnold Sacks and Mr. Walsh again. So John, you can come forward. I do not see Mr. Sacks. Item 7, JohnHollywoodHighland.org.
Thank you. 6,500 requests on Wednesday from these people out here, 6,500 in one day. Okay, this is the Hollywood Entertainment District, BID. As I said, I 100% support the BID because on Yucca and Argyle, we had a big eight-story crack house. I went to the LAPD, and I went to Eric, I went to everybody, they didn't do a damn thing about it. Then I went to the BID police that aren't under your control. In fact, I pay for them because my landlord pays into the BID, and he's able, under your formula, to pass that on to me. So they're my police force. It took that police force, after a year of complaining to the city, it took the BID police force 48 hours to clear every damn drug dealer out. And everybody knows, tolerant to drug dealing. Mr. Garcetti, incidentally, isn't here, he's back there raising money, and that's why we think...
He's right behind you, Mr. Walsh, listening to your every word.
Well, first of all, his name should be out, and incidentally, I think he's picked up my taste in clothes, it's bad. HollywoodHighlands.org, in fact, the person he's talking to, he's talking about campaign contributions.
Come on, no, no, come on.
You brought up the subject.
No, you stay on this topic.
HollywoodHighlands.org. Wait till I get up. Stay tuned for public comment. I'm going to rock this building.
Let Madam Clerk, before the rocking starts, let's prepare to vote on this, let's open the roll. Oh, Mr. Reyes, did you press your button by accident or... Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Okay, okay, Mr. Walsh, item 8, called Special by John Walsh. Mr. Walsh of HollywoodHighland.org passes on 8. No speakers in the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Okay, that brings us to item 10. Again, I have Mr. Walsh on 10 and Mr. Sacks, who does not appear to be here, so if we could get John Walsh to come forward.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, number 10. Again, this is again on, one of them was, this is also related to the BID. I want to, I don't want to waste your time. If I don't have a complaint, I leave. So you can have, you're one out, one minute. You have one out, one minute and 30 seconds back. We're all gonna get out of here a minute and a half earlier.
Okay, I do not see Mr. Sachs. So on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
And that brings us to... Mr. Murphy, you call an item 14 "special." You will come forward and speak on 14?
Yeah.
Go right ahead, Sean.
I support item 14. It's a good... It's a good item. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. On this item, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
At this time, Mr. City Attorney, I want to recess.
We haven't done 12 yet.
No, in fact, we won't recess yet. We want to do item... We gotta do item 12. And on that, I have Mr. Sachs and Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. John, you want to pass on 12? Okay, so let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, now we will recess the regular meeting and move to the special meeting, where we have item 16. And that meeting was called "Special" by John Walsh. My best friend in the world just entered the council chambers, Mr. Stan Lee. Good to see you, brother. Mr. Walsh, item 16.
Pardon me, sir, if I may.
You need to make an announcement?
Yes, sir, we do actually need to call the roll for the special meeting. That would be...
Well, let's call the roll.
Alarcon, Buscagno, Cartness, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Carrasco, Corry, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Weston, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, now, Mr. Walsh.
This is a different meeting. It feels different, doesn't it? This is John Walsh, for identification purposes only, "Anybody But Garcetti For Mayor Coalition", number 16.
Mr. Walsh.
And "No On J Coalition," for identification purposes only. This is... This is concerning gang reduction. Let me tell you, when it comes to the grid, I don't want to get shot dead in the street. I spend a lot of time walking late at night. And the gang reduction isn't happening in Hollywood. We had a big shooting two blocks from where I live, on Franklin, just the other day. In fact, Hollywood is in the top five crime districts, according to the crime mapping of yesterday. You can find that on L.A. Now. Gang reduction. How many of these so-called gang members were really gang members? I tell you, none of them. Because if a gang member rats, a gang member is dead. All these... Most of these people who claim to be gang members are... A lot of them are con artists with political connections. You know where I live. And remember, you want me to go viral again. If I die, or I'm killed, I believe that you're responsible for it. If I'm murdered, you're ultimately responsible for it.
Okay, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, at the request of Councilman Cartness, I'd like to move this forward with a CEO report.
Okay, all right. No other speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Mr. Dude, you can't... When you're sitting in the audience, you can't speak out. When I call you to the mic, that's your time to speak. If you're in the audience, that is a disruption of the meeting, and I'm not having it, okay? So with that said, we will close the special meeting. Mr. Englander.
Regular meeting?
Let me get back to the regular meeting. So we're gonna close the special meeting. Now we have returned to the regular meeting. Mr. Englander.
Thank you. Can I get four... Fourth with, please.
Fourth with, without objection. Now, Mr. Clerk, I believe that brings us to the general public comment.
Yes, sir.
Period of this meeting. So if I could call Dr. Tom Williams, Arnold Sachs, Sean Murphy. Go, Dr. Williams.
Good afternoon. Good morning, still. Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council. Several things. First off, most all of the northeast L.A. neighborhood councils will hold elections tomorrow for board members to the neighborhood councils. There's generally poor performance on the neighborhood councils for northeast, but how can we blame volunteers when they are treated the way that they are? The consolidated plan, we don't know what it is, where it's going, and that appears to be what the mayor's office wants to do. So we don't know what's going on in city government, but that's our charter responsibility, to find out and to communicate it to our stakeholders. Again, I shaved my head. Why? Because warriors in many places shave their heads before they go into battle. For a year, I have grieved for my son. He died almost a month ago, a year. Why? Because he had cancer, the C-word. How many people in the City of Los Angeles have the C-word? We don't know. However, it is a program. We need to stop it. But more than just research, we need to help those people who are experiencing it now. Bone marrow transplants have developed, so that it is a wonderful program. And we need a City of Los Angeles marrow donor program. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, followed by John Walsh, followed by Dow House Dude.
We need to reopen Van Nuys. The rainy season's here. Langisham and Chandler gets flooded. People can't cross that street when it's flooded. We need to reopen Van Nuys Boulevard. Also, the endeavors here in L.A., people are watching... Are gonna watch it at MRK tomorrow. I don't know what time. I'm waiting for my girlfriend to come back from New York today. She's on the plane right now.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, on my website, I promised you yesterday I would put in this green box the name of the mystery constituent. As you know, Zed refuses to say who he stole the tickets for and gave the mystery constituent, football fan, Super Bowl fan X. Now, when Markley Thomas had a problem with tickets, he was totally forthright, and he was excoriated by the racist times. But the white man is lying and will not say who the mystery constituent is, and no one calls him out, not even Bernie Parks, because he is a victim of racism himself. Who is the mystery person who got the tickets illegally? Howard Berman, the man who had a fistfight. Listen, if these two Jewish guys want to have a fistfight, fine, but I want Eric Garcetti to be the referee, and I want them in trunks, and I want to see two middle-aged guys with big boxing gloves hitting one another. And as far as Ricky Caruso was concerned, you saw me up here, and I told you he wouldn't run. Every other blog said he would run. Every other person in the city said he was run... Would run. And what happened? He didn't run, because he damn well knows what I have on him. He damn well knows what I have on his father. He's not worth $2 billion. He's a front. And I... And our website kicked his butt out of the race. You know it, I know it. And he loves to flirt with the reporters, except for Rick Orlov, since he's a heterosexual male. He can't flirt with him. But all the gay male reporters and all the women, little Ricky Caruso is out of it. I took his Italian butt out of this race. And we have a phrase in Italian, and I will say it to him, it means "I love you." Mange magaz.
Okay, Dow House Dude, followed by Merv Evans. You're the closer today.
I think I'm going to run for political office. I know how to handle dummies. I'm used to working with dummies.
That's apparent.
The real issue here is, why are we so stupid? We should have a program where everybody gets housing. We need to change the real estate laws, so the greedy mongers stop taking everything and leaving everybody else with nothing. We need a program where everyone will not have a landlord, and we will eliminate all these landlord and tenant disputes. There's too much... Too much in this world that we live. It's a short journey, and why do we have to spend it struggling to pay rent? Are we dummies? I think we are. But there is a way to get out of it. Read my book, "The United World of Free and Clear." Some people here have actually read it. It's on the internet. In that book, we get smart enough to provide housing for everyone and change the way we deal in real estate and other issues. So why don't you get smart and go read my book, "The United World of Free and Clear"? It's free to everybody, because I'm not a greedy real estate agent that is going to push his book so he can make money, and you can still be without a home. And stop wasting all our money on useless projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mervin Evans, to close.
Mr. Weston, I want to congratulate you. I really want to say something very positive about you. You deal with the most difficult people under the most difficult circumstances, and you keep a 100% level of professionalism. I don't know how anybody else could do it but you. Let me share with you, I would like you to refer to one of your committees a dynamic concept. I believe that medical marijuana should be distributed by the local county hospital to people who are really sick, not to young people or shake-and-bake situation, because marijuana is a gateway drug to higher and better things. But I would like you to refer to your committee a concept that people can get their medical marijuana, but only from the county hospital system, only by a registered doctor who has privileges in the county hospital system, right, to get the marijuana. And that'd be by direct delivery or by postal delivery versus by retail outlets. This would elude the problem of having inappropriate people getting medical marijuana, and it should be free. If somebody is that sick that they need medical marijuana... And a fellow stopped me the other day and said, "Are you medical marijuana friendly?" And I am medical marijuana friendly. But I believe that you ought to have the county hospital deliver it. Now, I want to quickly remind all our absentee voter vote-by-mail folks, you just got a few days left between now and when you need to get your vote-by-mail in. It's absolutely critical that we have a very strong turnout. I strongly encourage all of you to visit mervineevansvoterguide.info. I look forward to your continued support. And once again, Mr. Weston, those people who are really, truly sick, they got a disease, they got a problem, they got something that needs attention, they should not have to be at the mercy of if they have the ability to pay for marijuana, or if they don't. If marijuana is a drug to be given to folks, give it to them free.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, general public comment is now closed. Mr. Clerk, is there any more business before this council?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, members' announcements. Mr. Labange.
Chairman, I'm pleased to announce that China Southern will have a new route direct from Guangzhou to Los Angeles flying in tonight. We'll be out there to inaugurate that. That is tonight, which is very good news. Also, I do want to announce that tomorrow, at the Los Angeles Fire Museum on Coinga, there'll be a fire memorial. Our fire chief and our mayor will be there to recognize the fallen firefighters over the course of service. Also, the First Valley Tennis Day event will take place at the Sherman Oaks, Van Nuys Parks, Van Nuys Sherman Oaks Park, all day long. Tomorrow would be a great event to salute tennis. And as you know, Mr. Weezer, where are you gonna be tomorrow night? You're gonna be on Alvera Street for the Fourth Annual Taste of Italy, as it comes together. And then on Sunday morning, we'll have the run that Mr. Corry was so helpful in putting together for Connor Lynch.
So you're just announcing everybody's announcements?
I'm bringing them together. I'm bringing them together. I got redistributed all these things.
Did we make you the official announcer for the City of Los Angeles?
I'm trying to do it. Ten seconds. But Connor Lynch, you know, the great student tragically killed out at Notre Dame. His family and Notre Dame community has a run-walk in his honor on Sunday morning. And then also, to be fair to Paul Coretts, what's happening? The Big AIDS Walk is happening, and so important in West Hollywood, which walks through the City of Los Angeles. And in between that, we recognize all those who have fought the battle for AIDS, but also to continue the fight against HIV. So a very active weekend for us all throughout the district, and I thank everybody, especially our city forces, who help in the run-walks and closing the streets, and the Department of Transportation. And I'm gonna turn it back to you, because I'm not gonna announce what's coming through your district.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, I'm gonna get to you, but I want to go... I want to jump over you to get to Mr. Coretts, who probably wants to refine some of what Mr. Labange.
Oh, I just wanted to point out, yes, the AIDS Walk, which is, of course, of critical importance, is taking place on Sunday, and so watch for closures in the area of West Hollywood and east of San Vicente through the Fifth District, and I believe a little bit of the Fourth as well. Also, another great event and another significant street closure on Ventura Boulevard is the Taste of Encino, and that's a terrific event, but a good chunk of Ventura Boulevard would be closed as well, so watch out for that. And if you're in the area, come and participate.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Reyes.
Right. Folks in Pico Union, we have a cleanup tomorrow, 9:00 a.m., and I look forward to seeing them there. Thanks.
Okay, any more announcements? Thank you, Mr. Labange. Could everyone in the council chambers please rise?
Then I have to tell you, there's a big ship that came out of the sky that was at LAX, and it's coming through your district. I know you know it, but the shuttle. And I wanted you to announce, and that's what I want...
No, you announced it.
Well, all of us are excited about the shuttle as it flew over the 21st, and now as it rolls for its final resting place at the California Science Museum in Exposition Park. The great work of many is trying to make this happen, and I want to salute our very special gift that we got from so many people, the place of permanent home there. But we salute the shuttle's permanent home in Exposition Park, California Science Center.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Adjourning motions. Mr. Buscagno.
I have two. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I'd like to adjourn in memory of Tony Perkoff, owner of Ante's Restaurant, a landmark San Pedro eatery established by his father, Ante Perkoff. Tony passed away this week, Tuesday, following a long illness. He was 69 years old. His father made his way to San Pedro from Croatia in 1941 and opened Ante's Restaurant in 1951. Tony Perkoff had run the restaurant for the past two decades, carrying on the San Pedro tradition. Tony taught at San Pedro High School in the 1970s, and along with his brother Marion, ran the Princess Louise, a floating restaurant on San Pedro's waterfront. Tony and Marion proceeded to assist their father, Ante, who died in 2001, with running the family restaurant at 729 Ante Perkoff Way. A private man, Tony lived near Cabrillo Beach with his longtime girlfriend, Christine Carlson. The couple were active in dog rescue, and Tony was a frequent visitor to the San Pedro's Animal Shelter, and in his remaining spare time, he enjoyed sailing. Plans for a memorial are yet to be finalized. We wish his family our continued thoughts and prayers, and hope that the restaurant can continue in his presence. Secondly, Mr. President, I'd also like to ask that we adjourn in the memory of John Greenwood, a longtime civic leader and resident of San Pedro, who passed away unexpectedly yesterday morning. John was a graduate of the University of California Riverside and received a master's degree in political science from the University of Michigan. He participated... He participated in the Coral Fellows Program in 1967 and 1968, and many years later, accepted a position as Director of Training, spending seven and a half years involved with training and supporting Coral in Los Angeles. Most recently, John has been president of Coral Southern California. John was a founding president and longtime board member of the Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council. He was also Chair of the City Los Angeles Citizens Oversight Commission for Proposition Q. He also served 10 years as Vice President Development of San Pedro Peninsula Hospital. During that time, he was a member of the President of the Los Angeles Board of Education, representing South Los Angeles and the Harbor Area. John served as President of the Gang Alternatives Program and the Rotary Club of San Pedro, Vice President of the Angels Gate Cultural Center, Board of Directors, and was very involved with Habitat for Humanity in Los Angeles. John is survived by his loving wife Karen and daughter Elizabeth, who we all know as Deputy City Attorney here in the City of Los Angeles. John, you will be truly missed, and we, our thoughts and prayers are with the Greenwood family. May John Greenwood rest in peace.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Yingfong Louis Lo. Yingfong Louis Lo was born in December 24th, 1913, in Canton, China. She was married to Jim Lo in 1936 in China, and in 1939, Jim had to return to the U.S. because of the discriminatory laws of the Chinese Exclusionary Act. She was not able to unite with her husband until 1949. She was married, uh, when she was married in San Francisco on the USS President Cleveland. Without knowledge of any English, she successfully adapted to the new environment, working with Jim in the laundry business. She devoted a great part of life in discerning needs of others within her family and the community. Mrs. Lo passed away peacefully on September 30th, 2012, at St. Mary's Medical Center in San Francisco. She had six children. Daisy Lo Ma is the youngest, married to Derek Ma. And Daisy and Derek are very active in Chinatown, have been very supportive of the communities, not only in Los Angeles, Chinatown, but also throughout the region. Uh, they've been very active politically with various state officials. Daisy has, was the steward of, for us in the last phase of what was left of the CRA Advisory Board, and they've been tremendous, tremendous supporters of the folks who do not speak English, who are finding trouble throughout the bureaucracy, and I want to thank Daisy, and my heart goes out to her. Daisy and Derek are one of 14 grandchildren. Adam, Alvin, Anthony Ma, and on three of the other 14 grandchildren, and, and nine great-grandchildren. My heart goes out to Daisy and her parents.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Bishop Benny Roberts Benbow, who was born in 1917 in St. Louis. He passed away October 6th at the age of 95. He was a third of 12 children and was raised in a God-fearing home. His father and mother taught him and planted him in the church at an early age. His grandmother, in Memphis, Tennessee, used soapbox and a hammer to nail and construct the first pulpit ever used by the founder of the Church of God in Christ, Bishop Charles Harrison Mason, and she was later appointed the State Mother in Indiana. The bishop knew at early age that he had been called to the ministry. In 1943, the bishop was licensed to preach by Bishop Bostick in St. Louis. After completing his public school education and beginning his gospel ministry, the bishop enlisted in the U.S. Navy, and after his honorable discharge from the U.S. Navy in 1945, he returned to the ministry. While residing in Los Angeles, the bishop labored with great leaders such as Bishop E.B. Stewart, Bishop L.C. Page, Bishop S.M. Crouch. While laboring with Bishop Stewart, he received appointments such as the youth pastor, Sunday School Superintendent, and Evangelist Leader. Bishop Benbow also served as the Bishop Page's assistant and was appointed Superintendent of the San, Santa Monica District for Bishop Crouch. Bishop Benbow organized what is known as the Santa Barbara Region and continued to build the ministry. In 1970, Bishop Benbow received his Doctor of Divinity from Trinity Hall College. In '71, he was appointed Prelate of the Southwest Ecclesiastical Jurisdiction of California, where he currently was still at his passing, the Prelate. He also, in 1982, he purchased property at 8825 South Vermont, a venue in Los Angeles, and began his new work in the community plagued by crime. In 1991, Mayor Bradley named January 16th Bishop B.R. Benbow Day in Los Angeles. The bishop received several appointments, countless awards, and most recently, award entitled Certificate of Participation Given to the Bishop From Our Current Presiding Bishop of the National Church of God in Christ, Bishop Charles Blake, on June 2009. Bishop Benbow was the Presiding Prelate of the California Southwest Ecclesiastical Jurisdiction of the Church of God in Christ. During his ministry, he founded the 88th Street Temple, Church of God in Christ in the New Light Church of God in Christ, where he served as pastor. His funeral services were held on Thursday, October 11th, followed by a memorial service. Today, October 12th, a national celebration will be held at the 88th Street Temple at noon. From 9:00 a.m. to 12:00, the bishop would lie in state, and condolences should be expressed to the missionary, Lily, Benbow, Ma, and care of the 88th Street Temple. Also, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Stephen Crawford. Steve was, as they say, probably the most unlikely and unforgettable newsman you'd ever meet. He rode the assignment desk like he did his Harley, with gravel rumbling in his voice and a GPS of South, of Southern California tattooed on his brain. Underneath the gruff biker exterior was a man who would not rest until the story was right. He lost his fight with cancer on Sunday. He hit his family and friends hard, and so all of his coworkers at KCBS and KCal Newsroom. He was born in Frankfurt, Indiana, in 1949. After spending time at Ball State, he hopped on his Harley for Los Angeles, where he began his nearly 35-year career with KCBS, Assignment Desk, in 1978. He steered crews and reporters through some of the biggest stories that hit the area: Simpson Trial, North Hollywood Bank shootout, the Northridge earthquake. If it happened in L.A. in the last 35 years, Stephen Crawford was more than likely on the desk, scanners, scanners cranked up, feeding reporters his vast knowledge of Southern California. He was passionate about the work by members of our local police and fire department, making sure they got credit where it was deserved. Steve took care of his own crew and reporters with that same passion. Reporter Dave Lopez said Crawford was one of the finest deskmen I've ever worked with. He was a no-nonsense individual who took his work seriously and was very aware of how to, he treated people. Connie Chung said she had the fortune to work with Steve when he, when she anchored the Channel 2 news. He worked late-night shift, and when I was done doing the 11:00 p.m. news, we talked and talked. He had a deep, deep voice and a cynical laugh. I tried to make him smile and chuckle, thrilled when he, when he did, because he could be quite stoic. He was calm, deliberate, never silly, never catching a cat nap, despite the crueling hours. I loved spending the wee hours with him, not wanting to go home. I would dearly miss him, but am delighted to know he had a loving wife. Judd McAvain wrote that about the gesture that Crawford was famous for in the newsroom. I got one of those fingers when I would ask for a crew for a half-day stakeout that might not be coming up with anything. Came across as the strongest assignment editor I've worked with, but you know, he was a very nice person, and he had your back. Steve and his wife Cindy, his wife Candy, lived in Los Feliz, where they turned their backyard into a gardener's paradise. He died at home five months after he was diagnosed with stage IV cancer. He led a fiercely independent, private life and left the world the same way, keeping his cancer struggles to himself, leaning on only his wife, not wanting to upset his friends and coworkers. Steve is survived by his wife Candy and a host of family members. Funeral arrangements are pending.
Mr. Labange.
I'll second that.
Okay, we're all members. Any more adjournment motions? Members, this meeting is adjourned.